All right. It's right at six o'clock. And based on the participants.
We don't have quorum yet, do we?
Uh, let's see, we have Tawana here, we have Kira, myself, you, yeah, Tish, John, we do. Okay.
Now I want to make sure he's on.
Let's see, Mr. Worthy.
What was that, Tish?
He's here. Is Mr. Worthy here?
I see you all.
I see him. You have to expand your screen so you can see everybody.
Can you, can you see me now, Linda?
All righty, yes, sir.
There you are. Okay, um, we are going to go ahead and get started then, so we can go ahead and go live if that has not happened yet.
Okay.
Well, it's showing live YouTube on my iPad.
Yeah. Ms. Palmer, are we?
We are.
Okay, perfect. Um, at six oh one, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Um, Dr. Thomas, if you would conduct a roll call for us?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Davis, Mr. Stevens, Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Jaeger.
Here.
Dr. Dykman.
Here.
Mr. Worthy.
Here.
Dr. Gant.
Here.
Dr. Knox.
Here.
Dr. Maddox.
And Greg Davis is here. I just was on mute.
Okay, Mr. Davis is present.
Tawana is here too. She was muted too.
She's on it.
Oh, my bad.
So Mr. Stevens is the only one I don't see here. Is that correct, everybody?
I think so.
I think so, yeah, I don't. Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Um, gonna, we'll move on to item two, which is to amend and or adopt our agenda. So we'll open the floor for a motion to amend and or adopt our agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so Dr. Maddox and Ms. Worthy, any further discussion? Okay, um, all in favor of adopting the agenda, if you would show by raising your hand so that we can get an accurate count.
Okay, is that one of our features? Or you want us to actually raise our hands?
Well, if you're, let's see, Ms. Linda, if you're not if not, you can say ah, but it's a little bit harder to distinguish between voices.
Absolutely, and on my blackboard videos, very obvious raise hand, but I don't see it here, so I.
Okay.
Yeah, it's reactions at the very bottom, Linda.
I'm looking at three different things on this screen. I don't see reactions, but I'll look again. Keep going.
All right, so from what I can tell, I saw hands raised. Kara, I saw everybody that I can see and then heard, um, uh, Ms. Linda, I think I heard, Ms. Davis, I think I heard your voice.
I did raise hand just now. Did it work?
It did work. Yes, ma'am, I see it.
Okay.
So mine is at the top, these three little dots, Greg.
Oh, okay. I guess it depends on the computer.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, um, so moving forward to action, I'm sorry, to our informational items, item three, we'll start with the SPOLO report and before I, actually, before we go there, I do want to, just as a reminder, just that we, our goal is to keep this meeting um, as brief as possible while covering the necessary things that should be covered. And so with our informational items, um, of course, as well as our updates, um, and everything that's on the agenda, gonna ask that you really, um, we sort of, we keep those conversations to a minimum. Um, and so I will encourage us to move on. As we, you know, if I, if I find that we're sort of getting bogged down and into conversation and ask for us to either table that or follow up with those particular questions with, um, with Dr. Thomas and her team. So let's start with the SPOLO report, any, um, additional information? Or questions?
Yeah.
Based on that report?
I have one. Dr. Gant, I have one.
Okay, is that Dr. Knox?
Yeah. Um, I, it's just, it's probably not an answerable question, but we've been doing really well with the SPOLO and I just wanted some comment on how the future looks for it in our changed environment.
We, yeah, we won't know, um, you know, we're two to three months, we're usually two months behind on revenue collections.
Right.
Um, but currently we have, uh, if you go through the cash flow report, um, we've got fourteen million, four hundred dollars extra after you parcel out all the money that we have for projects that are listed, um, above February twentieth. So if you scroll down to keep scrolling, there should be a Yeah. So we're still, we're still, you know, last month, February, we collected two million. There should be one more page.
One more page, okay.
Yeah. All right, so here we are on projections. Keep going. All right, so projects not commenced yet, so, oh, that's good, scroll back up.
Go back, Lisa.
Right. Yeah, right, this one right here. So we have, um, we have projects budgeted such as the track and field, the manufacturing lab, and then finishing out, there's some money left over for Hillsman and, uh, let's see, West Broad. So in the bank, we have approximately thirty-five million dollars. There is roughly sixteen, well, there's, hang on, let me see. There's roughly twenty-one, twenty-one million, that is for projects that are either in progress or scheduled to have been budgeted. And so there's fourteen million sitting there in reserves right now.
Okay.
Um, there's a bond payment in September that is twelve point eight million dollars. So we have this funds there to pay that bond payment in September. And we're running projections, we're looking at reduced revenue, you know, anywhere from a million to five hundred thousand or seven hundred fifty and actually see how much money we're going to collect. But again, the revenue doesn't come in until a month or two later, so we won't know, you know, until, say, May or June, to see how April was, that kind of thing. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, John, before we leave that, can you hear me, John?
Yes.
Yeah, I have, I have a question on that because I do have some concerns about that. For the month of April, I know you mentioned about the thirty-five million. Got fourteen million reserved, but we got to pay the bond in September with that. My concern, and I think you said you are collecting about two million per month, but now for the month of April, you probably won't get that until May. I'm projecting that it's going to be far less than that because of the hit that the economy has taken.
Yeah.
What do you think about that?
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, we're doing projections saying normally we would collect two million. We're doing kind of forecasting, say it drops down to a million per month, or maybe seven hundred fifty thousand per month, or five hundred thousand per month. So we're gonna run some scenarios to see for the next six to twelve months, if that revenue is reduced, what that, what's that gonna do to us in the, in the upcoming year? So that way we'll have a better idea, you know, and, and for the next six to twelve months.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would be good if you can give us a report on that for the next six or seven, uh, months, but, you know, if the stimulus check that should help the economy, but in my mind, and they are saying the next two weeks or months going to be really critical, and people only get out to, uh, purchase essential things, grocery store, uh, pharmacy, things of that sort, but I'm thinking that that's still not gonna impact our SPOLO funds, you know, uh, from this stimulus package.
Yeah, the, the key is gonna be if whether UGA has classes in the fall where kids come back and we have a football season. If you, because that's normally when we get our, our, you know, our, our big, you know, jump in revenue. So that's, that's what we gotta watch for.
I'm happy that, uh, you mentioned football season. It was mentioned in the paper this morning, and it could very well be that, may not be a football season, and if that happens, we're gonna be in bad shape, so that's when we get our largest checks.
Yeah, we're, we're, we'll, we'll monitor it as it comes in and then give you guys updates, you know, monthly things. That way we'll know we don't get ahead of ourselves and then come twenty twenty-one, we can't make a bond payment or something. We'll, we'll keep our eyes on it.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. I think I saw your hand.
I was just gonna mention that we talked about this at the COC meeting and I was gonna make a report later, but, um, it was mentioned that in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, during the really bad economic times then, um, the SPOLO returns only dropped four percent during two thousand eight and they dropped another five percent during two thousand nine. So even if we assume the worst case of that, those kinds of years, we still would only drop from two million down to one point eight five million. So it's a pretty small, well, if we assume that the two thousand eight, two thousand nine, but those are pretty tough times. So that's a, just a something you can compare to.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Our early head start report or any questions?
Is Karen there?
She is.
She is. I, I just wanted to know if they've already started planning for, you know, what happens in the poll with them or where they are in that direction. Is right from the start plugged in with the, are they taking direction from the state like everybody else?
They are, and, um, Head Start, Early Head Start is taking guidance from the federal decisions that are being made. At this time, there's been no discussion, um, regarding the fall, but they will continue to follow CDC and World Health Organization guidance.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay. All right, moving on to our Athens Community Career Academy report. I don't think I hear any or see any suggestions that people have any questions. Uh, Parent Advisory Board.
Dr. Dykman and I attended that last meeting, I think it was March second. Is that correct, Dr. Dykman?
It is. I was just looking, I look, it feels like it was about three hundred years ago, but it was, uh, March second.
They have not given us the most current minutes, so the minutes we have are back to the January meeting.
And then getting other schools on board. I think I was muted, so my question is, has there been any change in the number of participants? Are we getting closer to getting all of the schools involved yet?
I did not notice a significant change in the makeup of that group, Ms. Davis. That is something that I know we had started having discussions about and, um, is a priority for me as well as determining how information that's gained in those meetings, um, is shared with a larger group of constituents.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Harris said that he and Mr. um, Broyd are working with them on their elections and they do have some candidates, for those of you who don't see that at the bottom. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Did you hear that, Ms. Davis?
I keep muting because there's movement in my house. Yes, I heard that. That's great news. I saw, actually, I've seen flyers and, gosh, Mr. Harris and Mr. um, Roy had been busy. I see flyers everywhere I go, inviting people to LSGTs and getting involved in the community. I think that's great.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. Uh, we will move forward to the Board President's report. There are just a few things I wanted to mention. Um, I'll do the shorter ones first. One is that you should receive a survey from Mrs. Palmer regarding work session topics as well as, um, training topics. And this is just a way, um, to be sure that we have everyone's input as we prepare a tentative schedule for fall and spring. So for our professional development and just the developing the work sessions, if you recall last year, maybe, um, maybe a little before August, maybe, um, or it may have been the summer, there was a tentative schedule that was shared with us regarding what topics would probably need to be covered during work session. Um, in an ideal world, those are the things that need to be covered, but then they may not necessarily capture everything. And so if there are any, um, additional topics or areas that you would like Dr. Thomas, um, as well as her cabinet to share information on, then we are asking that you include that information in those surveys. Secondly, wanted to share with you that, or remind you that we will, I will be sending out a request, um, or appointing, I should say, to be a bit more consistent with their policy, um, some ad hoc teams and committees to continue the work of drafting some of our norms. We, um, I, I know that there is a lot going on right now, so it's sort of hard to focus and we didn't want to bite off a huge chunk at one time, but I certainly want to be sure that that work is continuing so that as we make plans to move forward and as we're setting the, uh, work session agenda for the future, as well as finishing up this year, um, as those drafts are more complete and they get to a point where we all, there's some consensus around them that we can go ahead and adopt them, um, be it one by one or two by two or what have you. So I did want to, um, just remind you of that. And then lastly, excuse me, lastly, I did want to mention, uh, Mr. Davis, I know that you mentioned us needing to take action on some of the resolutions that we want to pass to the Georgia School Board Association, the policy ma, that policymaking body. And so from my understanding, I think, uh, you and Dr. Jaeger, and I may be, I'm missing the other person, but you're in the process of confirming a government relations meeting. So that, and so that we can take action or discuss, I should say, explore, discuss and take action on, um, some of those updates. Uh, Mr. Davis or Dr. Jaeger, you wanna take maybe one or two minutes to, did I miss anything?
I, speaking for myself, I, you know, uh, I can, what I would like is for, you know, for the sake of time on these, uh, meetings is that, uh, you know, we will, uh, send minutes out of the Government Relations Committee specifically if those resolutions get approved by the committee. And, uh, we would be sending them out and hopefully people will have a chance to look at them, so if they have any questions, we don't have to have a, we can answer those questions either publicly all at one time or we can do it individually so that we can save time at our regularly, regularly scheduled, uh, meeting.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be great. The meeting is tentative, has it been confirmed yet?
I think it's tentatively Monday at four PM, but we were waiting to hear from John, because he has a, actually, you said you have a four o'clock meeting. So should we say four thirty? We need a quorum, so might as well make it two.
No, if John, yeah, John, you are on the committee, right?
Yes, I'm on the committee.
Yeah.
I'm vice chair.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I can't be there.
Monday at four thirty.
Yeah, if you want to do four thirty, that's fine as well.
Okay, was four thirty be better?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do four thirty. Have we posted it yet, Lisa?
We haven't posted it because we didn't know for sure when it was going to be.
Okay, let's, let's do four thirty to five thirty, if that's okay.
Okay.
Are you able to until five thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
And I did get a text from Anton, uh, earlier today saying he could make the times that I proposed four to five, so hopefully that means he can stay till five thirty. I believe Anton is the fourth member on the committee that I forgot to mention, because I used a photo from the white or the yellow board that we wrote our names on.
Okay, okay, so it's, it's you, Dr. Knox, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Stevens.
Correct.
Okay, and what I hear you saying is that after that meeting, you all will send us notes for us to look over those notes. If we have any questions, we can contact you and so that when we get to our work, our, uh, business meeting next week, we'll have all of, all of that, um, any of those questions resolved.
And do we need to make a motion to put this on the agenda for next week?
What, what, uh, what Mike Pruitt has, has told us in the past is that you can make a motion uh, for a vote in a, in a committee report. So unless anyone objects to that, then we don't have to change the agenda and I can just do it when I give a report about the Government Relations Committee.
I, I was not aware of that, Greg, because, uh, I sent out an email today stating that, you know, if, uh, and it's fine to amend the agenda next week, uh, because it's a sensitive item. So let's, let's, let's follow our, our example there. The policy simply states that you can amend the motion because it's a sensitive, uh, item with these resolutions.
Can we get clarification from Mike?
Sure, um, so this is your agenda setting meeting, so my thought was, I mean, typically you don't make motions and vote in this meeting anyway. Uh, so my thought was that if the Chair, the Superintendent, the Board President requests that this be put on the agenda next week and there's no objection from anyone, that Ms. Palmer would just do it. Because no agenda has been voted on yet to be amended. You're, you're forming it right now.
I thought you said though that, that through a committee, presentation that, uh, the committee chair could call for a vote on a particular piece of legislation. We've done that before.
That, that's right. I looked that up on Robert's Rose and that would be another way to do it. If you already have that slot on the agenda next week, you could just do it there and not have a separate item.
Okay, so whatever, whatever people's, if, if, whatever people want, it's fine with me, either way.
I think the cleanest way, or maybe the way that I'll remember, um, may be to, um, maybe add it to our agenda under, would that be just under additional items?
Other action items.
Other action items.
Okay.
And that way, Mr. Davis, I know you won't forget, but my brain is sort of trained to.
Let me, I'm, I'll go ahead and pro, propose that now, that it be part of the agenda under, uh, additional active, active items.
Yes.
Because we're going through the agenda, Charles, for, for next week.
I, I understand that. I, I, I understand exactly what the attorney said. Normally, we don't do that in the, uh, uh, work session and of course, uh, the agenda is being set, so you can go ahead and put it on the action items, uh, for next week.
Okay. Great, let's do it.
I really like that, because that gives us a lot of transparency for the community as well. They'll know what we'll be voting on.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's it with my update. Are there any questions?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. All right, we will move forward with the Superintendent's report, Dr. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am. I will attempt to keep mine as concise as yours, Dr. Gant. I might run a little longer, but I would do my best to, um, stay cognizant of time. First of all, I just want to thank you all for your flexibility and joining us virtually. We are all learning to navigate a new normal and, um, it has taken a lot of effort and flexibility on everyone's part, so I just want you to know how much as a district team, we appreciate the board working with us and how much, um, I personally appreciate the district team and cabinet working to learn to do our work virtually. For those who would like to make public comment next week, you can email your three minute remarks to Ms. Lisa Palmer at Palmer LI at Clark dot K twelve dot GA dot US. That information is also available on our website, so we are accepting public comment for next week, but that will have to be emailed in and will be read on your behalf and you can obtain this information on our website. Next, as most of you are aware, um, yesterday Governor Kemp did announce that all K twelve public schools will remain closed for in-person instruction for the remainder of this school year. And as you can imagine, this has implications for many areas for all of us, from instruction to graduation. Um, when school will start next year, when school will end this year, there are a lot of areas that we are attempting to work through. Mr. Gaskins is working very closely with his instructional lead team and principals. We will have a principal meeting next week and Mr. Gaskins and I plan to meet this Saturday just to go through some of the kind of frequently asked questions that we're anticipating. One area that I know I've heard a lot about is valedictorian and salutator. Fortunately for us, that, um, determination was made before we went into this state due to the outbreak of the pandemic, so, um, if people ask you that, you can share that that has already been determined, but we are working to see what we can continue to do to support all of our students in terms of academic advancement, how we will handle grading of assignments and that type of thing. Um, we've had some questions about promotion and retention for next year. I can assure you, I've seen on social media that every student will have to repeat the same grade they're in now. That is a false rumor. Uh, we will look at data on students and look at students' performance up until the end of the third quarter, making those determinations and will utilize as many resources as possible. Um, this has been a necessary reality. It's difficult for teachers and other school staff who you know desperately miss their students. We've had to. We've had to protect them from themselves, they wanted to get out, they wanted to do breaks, they want to be in the communities, and we understand that, but we're trying to do our part as a system to help reduce the curve. Students are missing their teachers, we all feel for our graduating seniors. We are working to see what we can do to ensure that they're able to be celebrated and recognized in a manner deserving of their accomplishments. We do recognize the anxiety that accompanies this unknown, and the frustration is natural. We get some of that, you know, in terms of emails, social media postings, but please trust and know that we are working literally day and night to ensure that we're doing everything we can to meet the needs of our students. Our staff have exemplified an amazing level of commitment, and they're doing everything that they can to ensure that the academic, nutritional, and socially emotional needs of our students are met. One thing that's important to me is, and to you all, I know, is equity. And, you know, we are working to ensure that our students have access to digital resources, hotspots, packets. Uh, Mr. Gaskins, can you briefly tell us how many packets you all distributed?
Um, to, tons of packets, so our printer made about 2 million copies. Um, we asked elementary schools to send us the number of packets they need, needed, that ranges from 300 for some schools to maybe 500. Um, it just really depends on the number of devices that were deployed and the needs per, per community, per school. But we asked principals to share with us that information, and we made every effort to make sure they had all of the resources that they needed.
Thank you, so his team, they have worked in our buildings, worked with our principals, our teachers, and distributed those copies out to schools, so our students do have that access. There's some research that I've been looking into about unequal childhoods, and when we talk about equity, people have a variety of opinions, of course, on how things should be handled. And, you know, some people are saying, well, we should just end school now, or end school the first of May, because they don't feel that the, the quality of instruction is what it would be in the classroom, and we cannot argue that at all, they're exactly right. Nothing can replace, especially when you're talking about for the age of our students, the impact of face-to-face instruction, we can't replace the value of a teacher. Yet, when we talk about equity, many of our children have the opportunity for homeschooling in ways that many of our schoolchildren do not. And what we can do for some of our students at home to supplement what's missed if we were to stop doing what we're doing in the way of trying to provide instruction for our kids. All of our students do not have that access because of unequal childhoods. So we have a commitment because of equity and because of our passion for ensuring that every student has what they need to be successful, to do what we can literally unto the bitter end, to provide some instruction for every child. And it's not ideal, but we feel strongly that something is better than nothing. So we will continue to do work in that area to support our students with home learning. Lastly, yes, in terms of updates, I want to share what Mr. Harris and his team, Miss Paula Palmer and her team, and Mr. Mark Weaver and his team at Transportation have done over the last three weeks in terms of nutrition. The, we're in uncharted waters, and we've never had to feed students in this way before. Mr. Harris took this on without even being asked, Ms. Moore has joined in with his team, and now we have other departments that are working with them, but prior to other people jumping in, they really worked to figure out how we could get meals to students. So we have been feeding at two sites, at Hillsman and at Oglethorpe, and then doing bus transportation. We've started now with four sites, students, I'm, I'm sorry, families can pick up meals for their children as well as we're continuing bus routes, families can go online, click on their neighborhood, find out what time buses are there. We've received a couple of negative comments, and I like to address that always with the board, just to keep you aware, on Facebook, because we did run out of meals today at Hillsman. Uh, but it's kind of like a wedding or any other celebration, short of people RSVPing, there's no way to have 100% assurance of how many people to expect. But I did wanted to, wanted to give you some context for what those three departments have done. Today, we served in drive-through at Tenth Street Elementary, 2,156 meals. At Hillsman's Drive-Thru, we served 3,536 meals. At Oglethorpe's Bus Delivery, we delivered 2,372 meals. And Whitehead Bus Delivery was 9,132 meals. So if you just let that sink in for a minute, that's huge. And when you think into account that not all of our cafeteria workers are able to work due to age, due to health concerns, other factors that they're at risk and they can't come in, so Ms. Palmer and her team are doing this on a very lean staff. And again, when you look at how we predict how many meals we need, the first week we served a total of 16,906 meals. Last week, we served 32,008 meals, and this week we have served 37,044 meals. So we have had a grand total of 85,958 student meals served in the last three weeks. So I just want you to be aware, I mean, that's very significant, and we're very appreciative of our teams for making that happen. In addition to student meals, we have provided meals, and Mr. Harris, if you want to unmute for a second, we've provided meals for our staff who are food insecure. Most of those are our classified staff, and the strength of our community has been amazing. They have pulled in Chef Manny at Career Academy, has helped to lead that. But Mr. Harris, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Harris, could you share how many meals we provided to staff?
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Thomas, so we started last Tuesday, uh, and it was thanks to some amazing partnerships here in town, as you all know, with the shelter in place order, there aren't many people frequenting our local restaurants, and so Peter Dale, who owns the National and Sea Bear, as well as Condor Chocolates and Maple, him and Chef Emmanuel Stone from our Career Academy Culinary Arts Department partnered, and got several other local restaurants, the U-Garden from the University of Georgia, as well as several other of our local agriculture came together, and we served close to 300 meals to our staff last Tuesday. Uh, this week, this week they doubled their capacity, they served a little over 500 meals to our CCSD staff who needed the food at home, and they plan on doing it every Tuesday, as long as they're able to continue to get the supply. So the Food Make of Northeast Georgia, they partnered this week, they dropped off over 60 boxes worth of food. Uh, we had, there were collard greens, there's braised beef and beans and things I personally cannot cook. Um, but the chefs, they had chefs, I mean over six to seven chefs in the kitchen, at, you know, socially distanced, but just making food and just plating it, plattering it, and then just handing it through a drive-through window. So the first week, all the food went within 45 minutes, it was scheduled to be from 3:00 to 6:00. They had 300 meals made, they actually thought they would have leftovers, and within 45 minutes, all the food was gone. So the need was definitely there, and definitely seen.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, are there any questions before I go into my recommendation, and that'll be my last thing, Dr. Gant? But any questions regarding what we've done thus far to support our students' families and staff?
Uh, Dr. Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Thomas, I, I don't have a question, but I would like to make a suggestion, you know, pertaining to these meetings. Uh, you know, we're doing it through Zoom, which is a good thing, and we're gonna do it through Zoom again next week, the regular meeting. I have talked with several people today, and I think we need to be a little bit more transparent with that. Uh, if we can get something through Public Relations, to the media, to let them know that, yes, a meeting's gonna take place. As you stated a few minutes ago, if a person wishing to speak next Thursday night, they can email that to, I guess, to you or whomever, well, no, you said to Lisa Palmer.
Yes, sir.
But I, I, I think that we need to be a little bit, not think, I know we need to be a little bit more transparent with that, or get the message out in terms of how we're doing that. Now, when you mentioned sending the emails to Lisa Palmer, we still gonna go by that deadline by 4:00 next Thursday?
That is correct, we're following the same protocol, and that information should be available right now on our website. I'm clicking while I'm talking to you, um, but we have had that information posted, is that correct, Ms. Palmer?
Um, I asked Ms. Moore to post that, she has it in a link, I know I have it on Board Docs on the front page. When you log into Board Docs, it's there.
It's also on calendar link, Mr. Worthy, um, not about the comments part. I think we put that under the section where they would normally go for comments, but it is in like three places on the front page of our website that says Board of Education Work Session via YouTube Live for today. It says the same thing for next week, and then it says it in the narrative session where you can click for upcoming committee and regular board meetings, Board Work Session via YouTube Live. And actually, I see right here, read how to submit public comments for the 4/9/20 meeting, all of that's on the front page of our website.
All right, well, it's good that you mentioned it, and people probably have tuned into YouTube tonight, because see, all that is being said, the general public, all of them, they're not aware of that. So I, I, I think that, uh, by this being said tonight, and, and being a little bit more transparent with that, that's gonna be helpful, okay? Thank you very much.
If you have other ideas, please let me know, because we have put it on the front page of the website. Um, would not be surprised if Mr. Lee Share is listening in today, but I can work to see with Ms. Moore about us having that added to, if he could put something in the media, but we do have it in multiple places on the website.
Sure.
Actually, I was reading an article on the Banner Herald this afternoon, and Mr. Share has a link in his article on the Banner Herald website.
Okay, so it is everywhere, Mr. Worthy, um, it's in the news, it's online, Athens, it's on the website. So if people have other suggestions, we're very open to those. I'm offhand, can't think of other ways to do it, but it is out there in all of our media venues now.
Well, to mention.
Yes, sir.
Charles, are you done? Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, I finished.
Okay, uh, Dr. Thomas, I wanted to find out more about the access that teachers, I mean, parents and teacher, and parents and students may have to teachers when they have questions about certain assignments. So that's, that, I have about that. Uh, I also have questions about if, if there are concerns that, that parents do have as to accessing, you know, teachers, whatever the designated times are, how they can, who, how they can express those concerns and, and maybe take advantage of, of our teachers during, during the workday, whatever, however that's defined by phone or, or online.
Okay, Mr. Gaskins, can you speak to that, please, sir?
Um, yes ma'am, so one expectation that we set for all teachers is to be available for students and families between the hours of 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. And so if a parent or student, particularly our secondary students, email our teachers, then we expect for them to be able to respond to that email within 24 hours. Uh, we also made an expectation of any student that is working digitally, that our teachers are available at least 30 minutes a day for a live session with those students. So that session might be them introducing new content, that session might be a help session where they're supporting students through content, or that session might be a class meeting where they're just having some social interaction with the students. But if parents are having an issue with contacting the teacher, we would encourage them to email the principal. We meet with the principals weekly to follow up around them, monitoring instruction, and making sure that teachers are available to students and families. So if they're having that issue, they can just email their principal, and our principals are aware of those expectations as well.
Do we have any data as to how effective that's been? Because I know this is, this is totally uncharted territory for us, and, and, but, but to me, I mean, it's, it's, it's the most important thing that we're doing, I mean, feeding students is certainly very critical. Could you, you know, based on Maslow's hierarchy of needs, but in, in terms of making sure our students don't fall any further behind than, than some of them will anyway. But I just, do we have a way of kind of gauging, are, are, are we being able to engage our students and our parents in this process? Do, do we know if it's, if, if, if the issues of equity are being addressed around this subject? Do we feel good about what we're doing, or do we figure that, or do we think that we're doing the best we can, but we're not sure how effective it is?
So I think it's, it might be too early to collect any quantitative data, we do have qualitative data. If we go back for just a second, initially, when we closed school, it was for two weeks. So we provided practice and review activities, some families made the assumption, I've made that assumption myself, we will be back in two weeks. Um, this work may or may not be important around completion, um, as you consider work that might be pushed out on a snow day. Um, now that we have extended this to the end of the year, we are getting feedback from principals that students are logging on to some classes, but they're not logging on to others. So a student may have great interaction with their ninth grade English teacher, but may not be logging in and showing up for their geometry, geometry class. So now that we know they were out for the rest of the year, we have gotten some increases in participation for, for students. Now knowing that this is the only way that they will be receiving their instruction. We had several, several families today now picking up devices, now picking up work packets, because they realize that this is the only mode of instruction that they will receive. Um, I also met with principals along with my team early this week around if we have not been able to engage with families, what are some systemic practices we as a district can use to make sure that we're engaging with those families that have either not logged on, not turned in assignments, or not responded to phone calls?
Okay, I've just got one other question on this top subject, and now I'll leave it over other people, but do we have, can, do teachers have access to like what we have right now in terms of Zoom? Um, I mean, can they call together a, a, a class or, or class times established? Or, um, has it, if, if it's done for the high school, has it filtered into the middle schools? Uh, maybe even in terms of fifth grade, is there, are there, is there more equipment that maybe we need to purchase during this time period? Software to, to make it more efficient? So if you can address those.
Yes, sir, we definitely have the software that we need, we are a Google District, so Google has an application called Google Meet, which we use from really pre-K to 12th grade, and we also have some, um, we're, we're really leveraging that with our students with disabilities, those students that have one-on-ones. Teachers are able to use Google Meet and Zoom, some teachers are choosing to use Zoom to have a meeting just like we're having today, and we're using that from our elementary level, our middle school level, and our high school level. And if you visit some of our different websites, all of our, all of our schools have posted when teachers have taught lessons and videotaped lessons. Um, I was on Chase's website just yesterday, they are doing the morning announcements every morning through typing. We have music teachers that are uploading links to podcasts that students are doing. We have PE teachers that are leading workout lessons, all through a digital platform, using Zoom, using Classroom, Google Classroom, using Google Meet, and leveraging the technology with YouTube.
And we're doing this with younger students all the way up to high school, Dr. Gant, this is a FERPA violation maybe, but I remember we were in a meeting the other day, and you were talking about your youngest child, and they were doing maybe like a Google Hangout or something with her class and teacher. So I think we're seeing this, you know, use of our technology to stay connected with students from our youngest students all the way up through high school.
Yeah, I've seen, I mean, because we have kids across the whole spectrum, um, I, I've seen just an N of one. I, I've seen um, just an N of one, but um, certainly a lot of effort on our teachers' part um, to reach out to, to kids. They had an basically class, I think it was yesterday or today, to introduce um, Gabby's class, to introduce a new reading, I think a reading and math unit. We've had teachers calling and reaching out to Ian from Clark Middle, you know, offering like really monitoring what he's turning in and offering to help, actually, you know, reaching out by phone. And so um, I really, I, I'm, I'm impressed. Um, I'm not surprised, but it is, it's been such a, you know, a sharp turnaround. Uh, Mr. Gaskins and Dr. Thomas, I was, it was, I was relieved to hear you mention our students with disabilities and maybe learning challenges because that was really where my question was. Um, it's like, how do we, you know, how are we, you know, supporting those um, those students and being sure to the degree that it, you know, that we can, that we're connecting with those students? So I was really happy to hear that.
Yes, that's what has been a concern and I know Mr. Gaskins has been working closely with Ms. Heidi Heel with those students just to ensure, and it's a reality. And again, it's new and it was sudden. You know, but you even think about students with different, different learning styles. There are some students who it just simply doesn't work to get on their own. They need that teacher there. So Google Hangout and Zoom helps just to give that added layer of support. And sometimes for many of our students, it's about just that confidence. So they're able to have that through those digital resources. And Mr. Davis, I like um, Dr. Gant, I received an email yesterday from, actually it wasn't even a teacher. It was my child's advisor who said, I email students and about 50% of them have replied. So now I'm emailing parents to say, are you all okay? Ask your child to please complete the survey I sent. That's just saying, tell us what we can do to better support and serve you as a student. Um, and so, you know, even with older students who we just assume there's a level of independence, I've appreciated them reaching out to me as a parent when they're not getting the responses that they want back from these young adults, just to ensure that those learning needs are being met.
And I just wanted to also mention, um, of course, in addition to supporting our students with disabilities, we're also supporting our EL learner, our English language learners and also our gifted um, students. We are making an expectation that those teachers have at least 20 to 30 minutes where they're providing additional services that those students receive beyond their general education services.
I think, thank you. And um, that, that's good to hear. Be, because of those unique needs with, you know, just with individual students and groups of students. Um, and I think I heard you mention this, Dr. Thomas, with uh, Mr. Davis asked like, do we know if these things are working? Um, I do want to sort of mention from the perspective of a parent, but then also from a social emotional standpoint. Um, of course, I'm concerned about where students are academically, um, but just also um, interested in us being able to support them to the degree possible emotionally because it has been such a significant shift um, in their worlds.
I agree. And Dr. Myers has worked very closely with her team, even in terms of um, accepting referrals and student engagement on devices to look for trigger terms that may suggest that a student is really, you know, having some emotional challenges. Dr. Myers, would you like to speak briefly to that?
Sure. Um, you know, one of our systems that we had in place to monitor students on their devices, we've had in place now for two years and I'm very thankful during this school closure that we have it in place and it's, it's the ability to use Go Guardian through our web filter. We actually support staff to be on call on the weekends. Whenever a student searches on their device um, for a word that might indicate self-harm or feelings of, of, of thinking about suicide, it sends an alert. There's a program that sends an alert and we have counselors and social workers and psychologists who are on call um, all the time now, but also on the weekends as they have been and are able to respond. So we know that our students, especially now, um, like all of us are struggling with the gravity of the situation and what it means, all the disappointments of the, of plans we thought we would have and the, the missing the social interactions. We know that's very, um, that's very profound for many of our students. And so we're actively monitoring and able to direct help and support to students if they're expressing suicidal thoughts in their web searches. But our counselors and social workers and psychologists is, just like Mr. Gaskins mentioned with instruction, are attending to our students, for example, with chronic medical conditions and making sure that they have what they need and are in touch with their parents and the students. They're attending to our students that we, we already know might struggle with mental health um, issues. And so, uh, and then also our social workers are super busy, as you could imagine, making referrals to community resources, making sure that vulnerable families who were vulnerable before the crisis financially, economically, socially, emotionally are connected with the resources that do exist. Athens is a very generous community and so thankfully there's old resources, there's new resources. And we're just continually updating our toolbox of what those resources are and staying in touch with families to access support. Um, I had the pleasure to help out at the food distribution site at Oglethorpe this morning. And I just want to share how many families came through and I asked every family, are you reading? What are you doing? And, and the, the stories from children and families about finding experiences together that were bringing joy. And I, I know it's stress, but there was a lot, there was, there's a lot of reading going on. If they were telling me the truth, there's a lot of reading, reading together. Dads and grandpas and aunts were all telling me, we are doing a good job and we are picking up where teachers um, can't fill all of the needs when kids are at home. And it was, it was really inspiring to see so many parents and caretakers and guardians um, celebrating them stepping up and rising to the occasion of helping us to educate children. I think there might be some ancillary benefits, really. We, we are engaging with families in meaningful ways. So yes, it's hard, but please rest assured there's so much good going on.
Ms. Davis, you will appreciate this. I started to actually call you last night and it was a little late when I got home, but in my effort to practice some social emotional self-care with my um, with my daughter, we went walking at a safe distance with another student that's staying with us. And I didn't know where we were going and we ended up in Brooklyn Cemetery. Not to walk last night. But you know, it was good. It became a field trip, right? And so we talked about, oh, well, I've always heard about this for MLK Day of Service. So there's so many things out there like Dr. Myers is speaking about that, you know, and opportunities to learn. I'm, won't say quite my age, but I've always heard about Brooklyn Cemetery, but I never had seen it before. So it, we walked through and it was eerie, but we looked at tombstones together and we talked about ages and I said, Ms. Davis would be so proud right now. Uh, so I think it is, as, as inconvenient as this has been, I think it's pushing all of us to find new ways to connect and to stay healthy. And that's what we're encouraging our families to do as well.
You have just made my day. I think I can drop off of this call now.
I started to call you from in the cemetery, but I was focused on making it out.
Well, the good news is all roads lead to the, either the West, West Lake or Clark Middle. Either way, you can't get lost in there.
You're exactly right. So um, are there other questions that our team can add?
I just want to commend you guys. I am uh, half blind now from reading all of the uh, emails that I get from agencies, from, from Athens Tech, of course, and the subscriptions that I run through about suggestions for the distance learning. I've been training myself on some things as well. So I know that this is not an easy task, but I know that it is a very rewarding one when you get one phone call. I actually have phone calls for my students where I'm sitting on a comfort bridge for four hours. And I think I got, the first day it was full. It was fantastic. I was so excited. No one has called in since, but that's okay. I'm there for them if they call.
I've got um, I've got a couple of additional questions if, if, if it's okay. One is, do we have a sense, Mr. Gaskins, in terms of, can we keep a record or do we, is it, do we have the technology to find out how many kids are actually logging in on the given day or is that just something we don't have in place?
We, I would have to defer to Taylor Duke or um, or Lynn Duke. I do believe that we can do that. All of the digital learning um, applications we have are through um, our clever single sign-in um, application. So we could um, keep a record of that.
Cause I, I've started having, you know, I've had some workshops on Zoom and, and it's very hard to get used to. Uh, but once you do, I, I find out that I can, I can learn this way. Now, I don't know, uh, I don't know anything about the Google platform. But I, I, you know, do we, I'm, I'm just kind of, you know, we've always had a, we've always discussed as a district the fact that, you know, we have, we have children who are not um, you know, who don't have really access of the, on the internet, of the internet or, or they don't have wireless technology or whatever at home. I do, I think that, that, that the uh, isn't it charter that's offering free service for a, a period of time? Um, and if so, do our, our, do we know if our parents are actually taking advantage of that? Have, I'm just trying to get a sense. I mean, I appreciate what, what Lakisha is saying about her personal experience. Obviously I don't have that personal experience um, in terms of, of K-12 students. And so that's why I was, you know, I've been real concerned about, you know, what we're able to do, especially since we had no time to prepare. And so I, I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense. I'm trying to have y'all keep talking so I get a sense of, of, of what we've been able to do and, and um, and if schools are, are sharing best practices and just having to kind of come up with a, a very quick, effective uh, way of, of teaching that, that we've really never been forced to develop before. And so I'm, I'm still got a kind of a lot of questions. I don't want to, I don't want to extend the meeting Lakisha, but I've just got a lot of questions in terms of, you know, what, you know, how effective we're being and um, what, what, what we're doing to try to increase the effectiveness.
Right. I think you're concerned.
Go ahead, Mr. Gaskins.
Okay. Um, Mr. Davis, your concern is the same concern that our principals have. Our, our principals are really trying to make sure that our students are engaged. I can give you an example. At Hillsman Middle School, um, Ms. Douglas, she's printed off a list of every single um, student in her building and assigned every staff member. That includes paraprofessionals, the front office, personnel, the bookkeeper, um, to call those um, students weekly just to make sure that they have everything that they need and that they are actively engaged. In situations where students are not actively engaged in that phone call, those individuals are able to talk to their parents about that. Um, another thing that we offer to um, to schools and um, Dr. Myers crafted a letter for us. If there are families that we have not made contact with, the school is to send those names to us. We will send a letter to families to let them know that we care about them and we know that we have not had any engagement with them and um, and, and some time. And then of course, we will do our regular social worker referrals. We'll work with student support just to make sure that we're getting engagement. I will just make the assumption that this is the week that teachers have really ramped up that engagement and trying to connect with families that they have not connected with, knowing that the school closure has been extended. I think it was sort of difficult for um, families and teachers within that first two weeks to kind of say, we're just learning this. We're going to be back at school soon. But now they know we're, we're not going back to school and our teachers really want our students to be, be prepared for the next grade. And so schools, my team, Dr. Myers team, we're really trying to collaborate to make sure that students are engaged and we're using strategies to engage them.
And Mr. Davis, I would just add briefly that again, um, to reiterate what he has said, what Mr. Gaskins has said in that your concerns are our concerns, are the principal's concerns and are the teachers' concerns and it's difficult. Unfortunately, I know sometimes we want to be able to quantify everything with a number and it's not always that easy to do that, especially when your world changes overnight. What I can assure you of is that our entire team is very committed to improvement. So, you know, you referenced the nutrition part, but that's just one example of they fed every day. They had a debrief every afternoon at one o'clock to say, what did we do? How did it go? How can we improve? That same model is taking place instructionally, not necessarily every day at one o'clock. But I'm meeting once or twice a week with our Board of Controls from PISA, which is superintendents from the 13 area counties. All of our, of our cabinet members are talking to, in similar positions as them in other districts so that no one is reinventing the wheel. People have very collegial in terms of sharing resources, sharing knowledge, helping each other, even from the first letter that's gone out to the communication yesterday. I've had several other superintendents say, hey, this is what we've sent. We've said, hey, this is what we've sent. And that same thing is happening, excuse me, with instruction. And so Mr. Gaskins and his team are meeting several, a, a couple of times during the week. He's having level meetings with those principals. So I can't guarantee you that it's where it needs to be, but I can guarantee you that meetings are happening almost daily to make it better than it was the day before. And unfortunately, in a situation like this, that's almost the best that we can do. But that's actually very reassuring to me that no one is satisfied with what we did last week or what we did the first week. So consistently, our curriculum and assessment teams and Office of Instruction are meeting very regularly, getting that feedback and saying, okay, how do we make it better tomorrow? So that cliche of, you know, Clark County, better every day, but literally I have seen that in practice from every one of our departments right now of being very reflective as practitioners about our work. And then we can do and tapping into resources coming from the state as well as from our colleagues to ensure that what we do next week is not going to look like it looked this week because we have identified, even if it's from a qualitative way, in getting feedback from students. Um, Beth Moore said today, maybe we need to put out like a Google form where families can say, this is working great. This is not working. Students can say, this isn't working for me because we still have about eight weeks, you know, or seven weeks of this. So we are putting um, things in place to ensure that we're improving with each iteration of what we do week to week.
Thank you. Are there additional, thank you, Dr. Thomas and um, Mr. Gaskins. Are there additional questions?
I just wanted to ask, uh, kind of going off of what Greg asked about, you know, are there more things that you need? And something that Linda had sent in an email about, you know, is there something else that we can be doing? Is there anything that, that the administration that you guys need from us? Or is there something more that we can do to be helpful? I mean, I think that you guys have been doing a great job and I feel kind of like we haven't, I haven't personally done very much. So if there's something that you need from us, uh, let us know.
Okay. And I may reach out to you and take you up on that. Something I was looking at today was even reaching out to UGA to help us post some things online that, you know, students and families can do together. Some enrichment types of activities, some virtual field trips. Um, so, you know, if you, and it may not be your, you all's department, but you may know people or, you know, our scientists on the, on this Zoom could say, hey, I know some really cool things that replace the old school Fernbank Science Center that our kids can do because I want us to help and work with Mr. Gaskin's team to have other fun resources out there that our parents can access to help extend that learning at home.
Should we email those to you, Doc, Dr. Thomas, or if we see those things?
Um, let me get with Beth Moore and I Let me get with Beth Moore and I can have him either come to her or to Mr. Faison, who's on with us now. And we can get away to collect those. I'll make a note and we'll get an email out because those are things that I want that department to really start focusing on, you know, even maybe it's just something every day, tips for parents, you know, of something you can do fun with your child in science, a new way to help monitor your child's reading, but more from a fun way. But that's still reinforcing the learning to, um, for Mr. Gaskins' team.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
If you come up with a Google Doc, I can give you some, I can email some of it, it'll be individual. But if we had a Google Doc, I'm sure I'll freeze and I would be too. I, I get a lot of those kind of things and I could definitely put them in a Google Doc and start a list.
Okay, I'll get more on that and we will get that out to you all by Monday morning.
Okay.
Okay.
It'd be great.
Thank you. And I say the only other thing, Dr. Kent, I felt, I was hoping this part, the first part was going to be my short part, but maybe it will reverse. I do have one item on, um, that we're requesting for a consent agenda. I have spoken to, or between Mr. Fisher and I, we have spoken to everyone on property committee. We did make a presentation to you all last week regarding athletic enhancements and upgrades at both of our high schools. We had a property committee meeting last week and then Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Fisher and I met earlier this week to examine what we have in terms of financial resources and what we have in terms of need. I've also spoken to Mr. Derek Hott, principal at Cedar, Dr. Huff at Clark Central. Both of them have engaged with their school communities regarding our recommendation and have given us their support. So our recommendation is that we move forward with a turf field at Clark Central High School as well as a eight-lane track at Clark Central High School. Although that track will be located at Clark Central, it will be a Clark County School District track that will be accessible for both of our schools to utilize for high school events such as invitationals, being able to host region track meets and things of that nature. We are recommending that for Cedar shows. At this time, we moved forward with upgrades to their six-lane track because they are more landlocked, which was surprising to me than Clark Central. And changing their track was, um, a bit more of a challenge. Plus Cedar shows is still saying that their preference is not to move to turf, but that they have a field house and they are amenable to have a field house either at the beginning of SPOSS five or the beginning of SPOSS six. So that, um, we can move forward. And for those who are listening and wondering why we chose one project over the other, the two requests from Cedar shows are essentially standalone projects. So you can do the track without doing the field house, you could do the field house without doing the track. At Clark Central, the track and the turf are interdependent of each other and you can't do one without doing the other unless we incur significant additional expenses down the road. So if we did the turf now and we wanted to come back and do the eight-lane track, we would have to dig up the turf. If we did the track now and wanted to come back and do the field, we would have to make changes to the track. So, uh, based on funding, and there were funds that have already been allocated to help cover a portion of that cost to move forward with those projects this spring. We will need an additional $2 million, but we are confident and I was glad that, uh, we addressed that a little earlier with Mr. Gilbert. The $2 million, even if we currently, we receive $2 million per month in revenue from Athens, Clark County. Dr. Jaeger mentioned how in the past that drop has been 4% to 7%. Even if that dropped more than 50%, we would still garner enough revenue in the next six months to pay off all of that project. And then we could move forward with looking at the field house with, um, the end of this SPOSS revenue. We also had some questions and I would just want to put that out there. How does this impact Clark Middle and their moving forward? It has no negative impact. We already also have funds designated in the budget to continue to move forward with the new build for Clark Middle. Right now, the next stage will be to engage that community in a design for that building. But the $2 million that's additional that needed will not impact building Clark Middle as Clark Middle would have to be a SPOSS six project because a new build will cost us approximately $30 million. So the $2 million doesn't have really any financial negative consequences on that $30 million that will be needed from SPOSS six with $10 million of that already being allocated now in the budget. Mr. Gilbert or Mr. Fisher, did I omit anything?
Thank you, right on.
Okay, um, board members, do you all have any additional questions? I know many of you have asked questions already, but are there additional questions that have come up since we've spoken? Okay, well, that will be my recommendation for consent. Um, and that actually ended up being shorter than my overview of what we've been doing in supporting our students. So, thank you.
Dr. Thomas, I'm, I'm sorry, can I ask, go back to one other question that's dealing with the, with the food distribution? I know that we're taking spring break. Has there anyone from the community, a big agency, organization offered to step in or, you know, I'm concerned about that, with that window of, of no food distribution and-
What do you mean about spring break? I'm sorry, I missed something.
Okay, uh, if I'm look, if I'm looking at this right, we're not going to have meal distribution for, uh, a number of days.
Is that correct? No, that's not correct. What we are doing, Mr. Davis, if I think I'm understanding you correctly, we've already had our spring break and then we do have the other two days. But what we, the mid-spring break, yes. But what we're doing is, we were already moving to having, uh, meal distribution days a week instead of five so that we can support the Clark County mandate or request of, um, limiting interactions. So we are trying to reduce the amount of contact that our volunteers and staff have with families and that families have to have with us. So now instead of, um, us providing meals for the, um, every day, we will do a combination. Now, I will say though, you're correct in terms of those two days by law, if you're not in school, so even if, as we do bulk meals, and Mr. Harris, please correct me. But by law, if you're not in school, as a school day, you're not allowed to provide a meal. And I only know a lot about that because all of our RISA schools are going on break now. And they either would have to cancel their spring break to continue to feed, students are not feed during that time. Is that right, Mr. Harris?
That's correct, yeah. We don't receive a reimbursement for, um, days or nights in school. So you can't serve, um, from school nutrition. I'm learning a lot about school nutrition too. Breakfast and lunch on days where not, and operating on our academic calendar.
So I guess that doesn't answer your question, Mr. Davis. Sorry, as I talked through it, I understood what you were saying. So for those two days, that Friday and Monday, we will not be serving, but we are giving them food that Thursday and then the next Tuesday. Is that correct, Mr. Harris?
That's correct. And I was gonna say, please keep in mind, we're giving a lot more food now, like bulk-wise. And so ideally, even though we're not doing meal service on that Friday or that Monday, we're doing meal service on that Thursday. And so, uh, we're gonna cushion enough, cushion the meals enough to make sure that the kids have enough food. And then we'll start serving again that following Tuesday.
Thank you for answering all my questions.
No problem. That's why we're here, sir. Thank you, Dr. Kent. That concludes my extensive report. I apologize for the length.
Thank you. We'll move forward with our, um, our policies. First, the ones that are, could be posted for, um, public comment. Mr. Davis or Dr. Myers, if you want to, there is any additional information you want to add about policy J-CDA as well as, um, J-CDA E1 exhibit?
Yeah, what we, what, what we have is, um, is our policy establishing a student code of conduct. And, um, I think there's, there's very little change in that. We did have a, a discussion about whether or not, um, you know, parents would, would acknowledge receiving a copy. And, and so there was a discussion, um, about, you know, heretofore, letters would, I mean, uh, there would be a form that, that a parent would sign and, and ideally would have it returned to the school. And, um, so that was considered by, by school leadership, um, and staff that, that it wasn't very effective. And then we talked about whether or not to, um, have such a letter signed at a, at the first parent conference. But we decided that that was too late, uh, in the school year. It needed, the, the student code of conduct needed to be passed out at the beginning of the, of, of the year. Um, and so as parents come in, do schedules, for, for the start of school, then it's my recollection that that's, that's when we, focused on, um, giving those student codes of conduct to the parents and, 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 and having them held accountable by, by signing. It doesn't really change the language, but in terms of clarifying where, where the committee, the policy committee was, uh, direction where, where, which we were behind. That, that's my recollection of, of, um, what we agreed to about the policy. Is that fairly right, Don?
That's exactly right. I think the po, the policy committee did a great job of striking the balance between not requiring extraneous paper shuffling for our teachers, but also encouraging and supporting and documenting active parent engagement in discipline and reading of the code of conduct. And I think we've struck that balance with a more general statement in this, this policy.
And then we've got, uh, you know, with the reg associated with this policy is the actual student code of conduct. And Don, if you want to give the highlights of that, just the, the top, the, the, the mountain peaks.
Sure, very quickly, just to let everyone know, the code is required by law to be revised and approved annually. This year, we did that through a series of many different interactions. We had two half-day meetings with a team of administrators, behavior specialists, support staff. And we received input also from middle and high school and elementary school principals and assistant principals. We also based many of the changes this year on Dr. Richard Welsh's research. And he's given us some policy and practice recommendations. So if anyone wants to take a look at through the code, I'm not going to go page by page. But just to let you know that many of the changes were based on changes that the state DOE has made to their definitions. We did take out one page where we had a pyramid of progressive discipline. And we pulled that into some bullet points. And I hope you'll see, Ms. Davis, that we tried to clarify the readability and just make it more clear that there's a lot of steps that administrators take prior to, um, assigning a student to in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. And we really want our families and students to understand the great detail and care that is taken by administrators and all the different discipline. Discipline does not only mean suspension, it means conversations and asking students to reflect on their behavior. We also embedded our school discipline matrix into the actual code. And this was a recommendation made by Dr. Welsh and our administrators. And so this makes, I think, for much greater readability. And also to continually reinforce the point that our code of conduct is not zero tolerance, it's not formulaic. We trust administrators to use a pre, appropriate progressive discipline steps for each student. And the appropriate discipline may differ and should differ based on the actual, um, the, the offense or, or the, the prohibited behavior. And so, um, we've embedded that matrix into the definitions to allow for greater specificity. We also have in our code a clear delineation between elementary and secondary, um, progressive discipline steps. Because students who are five should be and are disciplined very differently than students who are 15 for similar behaviors. And we feel like our code now better reflects that. We, we always remind folks that the, the matrix is simply a guide. Again, we trust our administrators to know the students in their building and to base discipline decisions on what each student needs. That's the ultimate definition of equity around student discipline, about what students need and not by following a chart and a graph and it being somehow, um, based on zero tolerance or a formula. So, um, the state has added some clarity to definitions. That's probably the biggest change. We have a new, um, we have a new category of student misbehavior. That's electronic smoking device on page 29. It's number 42 now. And that is for the increase in students using, um, electronic smoking and vaping. And so the state wants us to quantify and report the difference in vaping versus tobacco or drug use. And so we're able to do that now. They also added a category, number 44, called violence against a teacher. And so instead of simply counting battery, um, you know, or when a student strikes another person, we're now going to be able to differentiate when that person happens to be a teacher. And we must state report in that way and our code now reflects that. Really, all the other changes are really for just clarity and readability. Couple of clarifications in the section on provisions applicable to students with disabilities. We worked with attorney Andrea Jolliff to make sure that our language of how we differentiate students with disabilities that are served through an IEP versus a 504 are treated related to school discipline. And always reminding folks that we don't punish students for behaviors related to their disability. And that's why we have, um, a review process that makes sure that behaviors, if associated with a disability, are handled, are remediated. We support students, but we certainly don't consequence them in the same way we would if it's not related to a disability. And then finally, at the very end of the code, we added some language to inform parents about their ability to opt out of the Georgia Student Health Survey for both high school, middle school and elementary school students. And, and again, we have some notices around FERPA and other things that are in the code. And it's our opportunity because we know that each parent gets a copy and it's kind of a one place where we can play some of our most important policies and, um, communication that we have with parents. But I really appreciate all the ideas from the policy committee. I felt like we had a robust discussion. Our code is better every year that people lay eyes on it and revise it. So I'm very much looking forward to hopefully next week, it going out for public comment for 30 days because I also trust our parents and our public to let us know if there's areas of the code that we could and should improve. So, uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Don, I do want to, do want to compliment, compliment the staff for, for the, uh, changes on that progressive discipline practices form. I mean, uh, layout is very readable and I think it's very specific and very helpful. So thank, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I echo those sentiments. I really like the changes that I see. I haven't taken that deep dive into it yet, but I will. And if I have any other feedback, I'll share it. But I appreciate your willingness to try and get this to a place so that it's a lot easier to understand for, um, all reading levels, high school and above. Yep, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Myers. Moving forward to the policies to be adopted or rescinded, Mr. Davis and Dr. Myers, if you would provide a brief overview of those policies for us?
I, I think we, I thought we kind of already have at the last meeting. I, um, I, I would think that maybe at next week is when we should probably get the feedback that we have from the public and, and discuss them then. But, but we can certainly discuss them now. I'm just saying that in the sake of time. I'm just saying that in the sake of time.
I'd be happy to give you a two-minute overview. Policy BCBI, public participation in board meetings. That's out for public comment. There was one public comment the board all received about that minor change to provide some provisions for how the public is able to provide comment in meetings. So that will have been out 30 days as of next week. Policy BDC, policy adoption, clarifies our process to adopt, revise, review, and rescind policies. And we feel provides a little clearer guidance to community members who may have ideas that they wish to bring forward or a policy suggestion. It provides much greater clarity of how to do that, and the appropriate step would be through the policy committee, of course. And then I just wanted to address policy and reg. JQKA simply fixes an oversight of policy revision that we did last summer, and we did have one public comment or question about it, so I'll address that now and can restate it next week. Simply, the law does not allow a student with an F1 status, a F1 visa, to attend a public secondary school without paying tuition. And the Clark County School District does not have a provision to allow for any student to pay tuition to attend our schools. So therefore, students on F1 visa are not allowed to attend our schools, and this is not dissimilar from many other public schools. But rest assured, we have many foreign exchange students who do attend our school. They're simply on the appropriate J1 visa. We had three foreign exchange students this year in our high schools, just to let the board and the public know. So this is simply fixing a technicality and aligning our policy with practice and making sure that we continue to be welcoming to foreign exchange students with the appropriate visa.
Dr. Knott?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is the word "foreign" part of the official lingo? That's kind of gone out of fashion in other places.
It's part of the state board reg on how, but our policies can be called whatever we wish. And now that we've moved away from the SBA categories, if we wish to call it exchange students instead of foreign students, that's completely at the board's discretion.
I would agree with that. Good point, John.
Or international students?
Like that, too.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Is there a preference? Is there a preference, international versus exchange? International seems more specific and clearer.
We can give international exchange students.
Yeah.
Oh, you think exchange students would be better?
I think she said both.
Yeah, international exchange students. I mean, I think that is how we refer to them.
Okay.
That's good.
Thanks.
Sure.
Other questions?
So I have one not relevant to this discussion. I'll follow up later.
Okay, about the policy, Ms. Davis?
About that particular one, it's just the definition of the classifications that I need to do some research on. Thank you. There was another policy that I did read public comment on, and it was the public participation in board meetings. We did have public comment on that one, did we not?
We did.
That's the one, BCBI.
Okay, so that's the one that we're going to discuss next week? Or can we pull that now? Because we can't vote now, right? So we'll just wait and discuss it all next week? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, if you have questions, I mean, Dr. Myers, I think, share it with us that the ones that have a public comment. But certainly, if you have a question about that specific, what she shared so far, then feel free to ask.
Well, I think I'm asking if the board took a look at that comment, and if we agree with that comment, then do we need to take this policy forward? Isn't a question.
I did not agree with it.
Where is it? Was it sent in an email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
It was. I'm happy to resend.
No, I can look for it. I don't remember seeing it, but I can look for it.
There were two public comments. I put them in a PDF and sent them to the board.
Yes, what Linda is questioning there, and I've read that those comments, Dr. Myers, that you sent out. Linda's question was centered around policy BCBI. And this is a time to discuss it. And then, of course, next week, you know, we'll look at it and we'll decide whether we're going to vote for it or it should be sent back to the policy committee. Are we still live?
We're still live. I heard Ms. Davis say that she has concerns about that. Dr. Dykman, did you, did you find?
I did. I just found it. Sorry. She said on Monday. I mean, the comment was clearly angry and unhappy about the, about the new policy. I wasn't particularly moved by their complaints. It said if we get acquainted with parliamentary procedures, you know, I just thought it wasn't particularly relevant. Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't moved by it. So I was just going to carry on. But do we, do other people, did other people feel like they were moved by it? Linda, were you really?
I felt like that, well, the part that I paid attention to is this, this policy is aimed at the behavior of, I think, maybe one person, unless somebody can think of others. And if there are others, then two? So, okay, so we're going to have a policy for two people.
There have been at least two situations where the board president gavelled and gavelled, and things did not stop. And so in my house, once is a fluke, but twice is a trend. And so I think we've come to the point where we do have to put some teeth in the rule so that we have control of our own meetings.
I think we have that authority without this policy is my position on that.
Well, I think we already have the policy. It's, the policy's not new. It's just putting in, you know, a consequence or what would happen if somebody doesn't abide by the policy. Because the policy's already been that it was supposed to be three minutes. And I guess, to me, regardless of how many times it's occurred, if there's no, if there's nothing that happens, if you violate it, then why even have it? Because then people would just talk forever.
And that's one of the, but, go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Go ahead, Linda.
Well, my concern is that it needs to be an even-handed thing then for all of us, and we need to put consequences in the policies that we don't abide by. So again, for me, this is a punishment to the public. And again, it's one of those things that's more antagonistic toward the public. And they are the people who elected us to represent them. And it just doesn't seem like the kind of message that we want to be sending.
I disagree. I think the chaos of our meetings in the fall and that that's actually the worst thing we could possibly have is chaos in our meetings, and this is a way of getting a handle on that chaos. We need to show that we're in charge of our own meetings, Linda.
We're not. But, okay, thank you. And there is inconsistency, and that's what I'm saying. So if we're going to address the inconsistency of being in charge of our meetings, then I would want us to address that across the board.
Yeah, but I feel that it could be addressed differently. There's some strong languages in that policy. And I can tell you now, I totally disagree with it, and I think that it needs to be sent back to the policy committee to wordsmith that policy. Because speaking in terms of violation now, there are a number of policies have been violated.
Okay, I think, I think the problem is, is that we always go far afield, and we always kind of talk in code. I would like to stick, if we're going to discuss it, I would like to stick to the actual wording of the policy and where the objections are as to what is actually written. But again, it's the preference of the board. If we want a wide range of discussion about what rules have been broken by whom, when, and how, you know, so be it. But I think that we're just going far afield, and I would like to hear if there's other public comment. Don, when does this close for public comment?
It'll be open for public comment until next week's board meeting. And I'll, if I receive any, I'll send them to you immediately.
So I feel like, thank you, Don. So I feel like, so we're going to have the discussion now, and then we're going to be talking kind of, well, things in the past, and certain members did this and did that and didn't like that, and they wrote the policy and all this kind of thing. If we're going to have that discussion, let's have it next week once we get all the feedback. That's just my suggestion. But if we think we can resolve it now, I mean, I'm with, I'm with Dr. Jaeger. I've, you know, I'm not persuaded by anything that I've heard or either from feedback from this one particular person or from what's being said here tonight or what's been said at the policy meeting. I mean, this is, I think, our third discussion on this. And I'm not persuaded that if, if the majority of the board feels like we need to present it back to the policy committee, then so be it. But I, for one, as the chair, don't feel like that's necessary, but it depends on the majority of the board. So it comes down to a vote, basically, as I see it.
Can I recommend, Linda, that maybe we formulate your other concerns and submit them as a work session topic for future discussions and not mix it up with this one policy? Or do you think they can, they can't be separated? Because?
They can certainly be separated. I would want them to be separated. But in the interest of transparency and integrity, I would ask us to consider, do we need to seriously put a penalty on public speakers who come to our board meeting and share their opinions? Or can we better handle that? It just feels very long-term something. There's something about that just that does not feel to me that we are respecting the people who disagree with us. And that's essentially what it, what it amounts to. I think people get heated about things that they disagree with us on. And so to prohibit them from being able to speak to us for three to six months is, that sounds like an infringement to me. So again, I simply don't like the language and the fact that we think that we need to penalize people who can't obey a time limit. And so again, we have other means of enforcing that time limit. Let's use the means that we have to enforce the time limit and leave the policy alone.
Dr. Knott?
So some, Linda, so what are the means to enforce the time limit?
We have, we have security at all of our meetings, and it can simply be that, you know, this person gets asked to leave, and then they get escorted away from the podium. That's fine.
I guess I feel like having security escort somebody out is kind of even worse. It means that the board itself is not handling the meeting, the nine members of the board, the elected people are not handling the meeting, but we're relying on security.
I think that's what security is there for, to help enforce the rules.
I disagree.
It happens in our school system all the time. People get escalated up to the point that they have to have some intervention. So I'm just asking for an intervention at the moment that is for the moment. And, you know, the whole world can change in the next day, and that whole issue can be resolved by maybe getting that person some additional information. But I do not see putting a policy out here that says you're not going to be allowed to talk to us for 60 days because you didn't follow our time limit. That's a lot to me. That's what I'm basing my objections on. Then when I read the additional comment, I was like, yeah, that makes sense to me as well, because again, we don't have this often. I've been on this board eight years, and only in the last year have I even seen this situation occur. And I think that that is going to be, that's probably indicative of the, you know, position that we were dealing with, period, or the condition that we were dealing with, period, as a board. So I'm concerned that we would react so strongly to penalize our citizens.
At the end of the day? Oh, go ahead, Dr. Maddox.
Okay. At the end of the day, we are having a business meeting, and I stand by this policy because we should be able to come into a meeting and be able to expect everyone, like you said, to follow processes and protocol. And, but at the end of the day, we are conducting a meeting. And so everyone should be expected to, to act in a manner which is respectable. And this year has been a circus. And so without having any kind of teeth in that policy, I think that it just continues to open the door for more of what we've had.
Thank you. I will, I will say that, I mean, I've already shared with, I think, the policy committee, maybe when we started discussing this, that I felt that, just my thoughts about policy, I think the, the three months and then the six months, I do think it's a bit much. I just think when, if there are concrete situations that are isolated but continue to happen with a particular person, I just don't, this, to me, doesn't solve that. And that's my opinion. But I will go back to what Mr. Davis said. It is a matter, I think during this time, it's a matter of both. So it's a matter, next week, we'll vote on it. And I think as a board, of course, whatever the majority decides, I think will, that will determine what will happen with this particular policy. But again, I don't think that's new to the policy committee, but I just thought I would share it publicly that at this time, this is not, it's not something that, in good faith, that I would feel comfortable supporting.
Dr. Gant, may I make one last comment on this? Okay, this is my 16th year on the board. Now, yes, I have seen people taking addition, 10 seconds, or whatever, et cetera, and whatnot. But in this particular situation, I think that one person was targeted, and that's not right. Anytime you're going to write a policy to punish others for, and targeting one person, that's not the way to do business. Dr. Maddox mentioned a few minutes ago, yes, this is a business meeting, a board of education meeting is a business meeting where we're taking care of business of Clark County School District. And yes, we need to do it in orderly fashion. But this is just, just not a bit too much. It's totally too much. And you're sending the wrong message, as Ms. Davis said a few minutes ago, to the public. And I'll say it again, yes. I'm for sending the policy back to the policy committee to wordsmith that and lighten up on the language. And that was another comment I wanted to make, but I think I'll make it next week because something at the end of that policy, and I can't see it on my iPad now, and I have to take a look at it. And then I'll make that comment next week.
Okay. So I think we are, Mr. Davis and Dr. Myers, I think there's been an overview of the policy BCBI, BDC, as well as, excuse me, as well as JQKA. Does that conclude the overview, or?
As far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Any other questions, board members, before we leave this part of our agenda? Okay, moving forward to our personnel recommendations, our April personnel list, and then our April contract list.
Questions, Dr. Gant, from anyone regarding our personnel list?
I've got, I've got one, Dr. Thomas. I just, you know, not, not with the list, but just, how is this, this pandemic? how has this this pandemic affected our hiring process? I mean, because, you know, we've we've been pushing it to do it earlier and earlier and and but then this comes along. And and so I know there's certain challenges that have happened. So maybe you can just say a few words about how y'all have been able to overcome these challenging moments in terms of signing contracts and recruitment and all that kind of thing?
Yes, sir. Ms. Duke?
Yes. We have come up with different creative ways. Our principals are doing interviews remotely like this meeting we're having tonight. And we have figured out ways to onboard electronically completely. And our contracts are electronic already. And so we're just being creative and trying to come up with solutions. You know, all the career fairs were canceled and that's put a little bit of a damper on things, but we still have the para program to teachers. We're still working on that. We're just doing it a little bit different. You know, it's just making us think more creatively. I'm not worried yet.
Good.
Ms. Duke, I think one of our administrative positions, that committee chose to wait and one wants to move forward. Can you speak briefly to that?
Yes, ma'am. We the Career Academy wanted their board is acting like an LSGT does for the for the regular schools. And they wanted to do in-person interviews so the candidate could do a presentation. And they have elected to wait. And so we are going to, as soon as we are able to safely return to work, we will schedule those interviews. And until then, we are asking Dr. Barnett to remain as interim, realizing that that could be, you know, a few more months. We just don't know. And Chase, we have come up with a possible solution for the staff and the community meetings. If you recall, that's the first part of hiring a principal. And we had not done those yet. It was right. They were scheduled right after the pandemic, you know, got really bad. And so we've come up with another solution. They have done that two years in a row, so they wanted to do it a little bit differently anyway. So Mr. Harris is going to work with them to see if we've found a solution that is agreeable. And Coil is ready to do interviews and I think it's next week. I'd have to look at my calendar. Sorry, off the top of my head. But soon, they've already done part of the work.
Okay. Thank you for for that information. For those updates. Any other questions?
Just 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 one and are the are the universities like Savannah State and Georgia Southern stuff, I are they, can they give us access or have they given us access to graduating education students? Or is that against HERPA or HIPAA or I mean, is there, what's the what's the way of reaching soon to be graduates?
We had already, I'm sorry, we had already attended some career fairs and we have had people reach out to us outside of career fairs. And we have a list of candidates that Mr. Harris is giving to principals. So they will, you know, go ahead and start reaching out to them. But as far excuse me, as far as schools giving us a list of graduates, yeah, I don't think that that is something that they've offered up. And quite honestly, you know, we'd rather have a list of graduates that are interested in coming our way than having to, you know, fall through a list of people that aren't interested.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move forward with our consent agenda and discussion. With item 9.1, consent.
Would you read that question? I'm not able to see it on my iPad. I read it earlier.
Okay, sure. I'll read each item out and you all can just say if we'll keep it on consent. The first item is 9.1. That's the action to approve February 27th work session minutes.
Consent?
Yes.
Consent.
Oh, here we go.
Okay. 9.2, the action to approve the March 5th board meeting minutes.
Consent.
Okay. 9.3, the action to approve the program of study booklet.
I have a course. No, 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 no. I have a question about the, in fact, I have two questions. If I guess it would be Lisa, can you put that up on the screen? And enlarge the print. Okay, good.
Isn't 9.3 the field trips?
Say pardon?
Isn't 9.3 the field trips or no? Oh, wait, is it? This is the agenda I printed from Board Doc, so.
I see 9.3 action to program of study.
Okay.
We removed those at last minute because they were during the school year. So Mr. Gaskins asked that I remove those because they wouldn't be able to take those field trips.
Okay, sorry, I have an older. I refreshed it.
Okay, Lisa, I believe if you go to page eight, page eight, I believe it is. Graduation requirements, I think that's what it is. Yeah, okay. If you can scroll all the way up toward the bottom there.
The bottom?
Yeah, keep going. I'll let you know when to stop. Okay, right there, right there. Okay. Now, I was reading over this and of course, I'm I don't know, I may be being picky because I haven't been a high school principal. And I like for various things of this nature to be explicit. And I've said this before, when you look at CTAE and or modern language, Latin and fine arts, it's all together. Of course, you gotta have three units. I was thinking that would it be beneficial, and it used to be this way, would it be beneficial to have a foreign language in one block and the CTAE and fine arts in in a separate block? Uh, CTAE, fine arts, one unit, you know, they're all electives. And then, of course, with the foreign language, have that in a separate block with two units. Is that clear what I'm what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. We can do that. We try to use the same format that the state uses. So if students transfer from a different district and they're familiar with this document, it looks the same that as the state is using, but we can definitely make that that modification, that formatting modification.
I think it'll be explicit, especially to students and people dealing with it. While I have you, Mr. Gaskin, I wanted to answer the question, and I think this is on page 14. But anyway, let me ask you this first. And you have mentioned this in one of our regular board meetings that is looking at going back toward a four by four schedule. Are we doing that in the fall of the year?
Yes, sir. We have made all of the necessary, I think, moves that we need to make. Our last decision was around transportation. I've been working with Dexter Fisher's department to ensure that we could have minimal changes in our bill schedule. I think that we should be able to do that. We were supposed to have a meeting to finalize that decision right before the pandemic. So we can definitely answer that question next week. I I do think we have everything we need to announce to our our community that we're definitely going to a four by four schedule, and this what our bill schedule will be.
Okay, the reason I was asking, and I'm not sure, I thought it was on page 14. I should have written this down. And it was in the program of study, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, if we're going back to a four by four in the fall of the year, whether it was in that by mistake. And 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 let me say this to you. I love it. Dr. Eastman and I, we're also, Dr. Willis, we implemented the four by four schedule at the high schools several years ago, and I really like it. There are some advantages. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say something, Mr. Gaskins. I, you know, with with all due respect to what what Charles just said, I'm I'm leery about changing a format that's used statewide. But, you know, I don't know, Charles, so you feel real strongly about that? I mean, is this something to fall on your sword for? Or or I mean?
No, I feel real strong. I feel strong about it, you know, because like I said, I use the word to sort of mingle that those together. But if you separate it out there, I I I think it would be explicit in terms of students looking at it, our counselors, et cetera. And it used to be with separate, in a separate block with the foreign language, two units, you know, that's that's a state requirement. And we also had a statement that for students that if you are planning to apply to a a school like Harvard, Yale, et cetera, then, of course, you need some of those schools require three units in foreign language.
But see, if I follow this form, what I see us doing is making another line saying two units. And so if you if you add up the column, then you end up with 26 units total.
No, 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 no. Two units in foreign, because see, in the block that you have now, you got CTAE. You got the language in there. It says modern language, but I'm saying foreign language. And then you have fine arts, okay? So I said, if you put a separate block for a foreign language and have two units, then another block for CTAE, fine arts, one unit, that's the line add up to three units. And it would meet the requirements of 24 units to graduate from high school.
So is a foreign language required of all students now? Two two units of all students? I thought it was just college bound students.
No, I'm I'm not. No, 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 I didn't say required. A foreign language, that's an elective. You see down at the bottom where it said elected for units, you got now.
So if you put two units of foreign language in its own box, it looks like a requirement. Is that what we mean to say?
No, it's not saying it's a requirement. No, no, no.
Okay, well, let me maybe let me interject and maybe we can figure out the formatting stuff. Because it sounds like the essence of what's there won't change. Of course, these are state requirements, but if we're talking about like a formatting issue, that may be something that we that you all can, Mr. Worthy and Mr. Davis can and and Dr. Jaeger, and of course, anyone else who who needs, who wants to have further conversation about that can have that a little bit later directly with Dr. Thomas and Mr. Gaskin.
Well, let me clear up something with Dr. Jaeger since she mentioned requirements. Okay, when you look at Yale slash personal fitness, okay, that's one unit. That's required, but it didn't say required. And what I'm saying, it would be required. It would be the same as as you scroll back up. All of those are required units. A student must or shall have four units of all of the four years of all of the core courses. Those are required, but it didn't say required. So if you if you do a separate block for a foreign language, it's not saying that it's required.
Okay, well, I I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, Dr. Jaeger.
No, I'm I'm happy to have this discussion offline.
Yeah, I just I just don't feel like we need to vary from what the what the state is doing right now without, you know, fully vetting it. So I I'm just very nervous and I don't know how to have the discussion or what.
Well, I don't know.
Ultimately, ultimately, the work will be Dr. Thomas's and Mr. Gaskin. And it'll come back on our agenda next week. So do we need to remove this from consent?
I would say so.
Okay, let's remove it from consent. And then if there are any questions that should be need to be asked moving forward, we can do that and it'll come back to us next week, okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Item number 9.4, which is the action to approve the intent to apply for head start in the early head start cost of living adjustment and quality improvement supplemental grant awards. Want to keep that on consent?
Consent. Yes.
Consent, yes.
Okay. Item 9.5, the action to approve the purchase and installation of a new track for Cedar Shoals High School.
Consent.
Okay. Item 9.6, the action to approve the purchase and installation of artificial turf and eight lane track and an eight lane track for Clark Central High School.
Consent.
Consent.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this during during 9.6. Just I wanted to inform the board. I won't be, I'm sorry, can we go back to that 9.6? Can we remove that from consent?
Okay.
Read 9.6.
9.6 was the action to approve the purchase and installation of artificial turf and an eight lane track for Clark Central High School. I won't be voting on that because of a conflict of interest.
Well, you you don't have to remove it from consent when it comes to voter. Well, okay, I see what you're saying. You can you can remove it off there and we can vote on it. Well.
Individually, that's fine.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay.
We vote on it individually, yes.
Okay. Thank you. 9.7, the action to approve transportation transportation routing software system contract renewal for Edulog.
Consent.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. And then lastly, our action to approve the design bill renovation services contract for the manufacturing and welding lab for the Athens Community, Athens Career Academy.
Consent.
Okay. All right, we're now at item 10. And we for executive session, so I'm open the floor for a motion to go into executive session.
I moved to go to an executive session.
That good.
To read the reasons.
What was that, Dr. Jaeger?
Do I need to read the whole thing?
Could you just for the record?
Maybe we go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Okay, thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay. All in favor of entering into executive session, if you would, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay.
Do you also comment from Mr. from Attorney Pruitt, Dr. Gant?
Okay. You said there's a comment from Mr. Pruitt, Dr. Thomas?
Yes, he wanted to know if you all need him in this executive session or would you be engaging only with the other attorneys?
Uh, we do not.
Did you copy Attorney Pruitt?
Yeah, so I'm I am done then, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure.
So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to leave this meeting and then log into the executive session link that Lisa sent us earlier.
That's right.
Okay.
And so we'll discontinue this meeting at at this time. And just for the record, noted that we voted to go into executive session at 8:07.
Afterwards, or do we do we have to come back to this afterwards just to?
Lisa, oh, come back to the main, like this particular meeting?
No, because.
Well, hold on a minute. We do have to, with once we leave executive session, it does It does become an open meeting again, at that point, we will of course, vote to adjourn. And so I don't think that we would need to log back into this meeting.
No.
Uh, I think that may be like a technology issue, if they, um, we could request that they. Once we exit executive session, if it can be recorded for the public that we. Are leaving executive session and that we are adjourning. Dr. Thomas, I think that would be in your area, Mr. and Mrs. Palmer's and. Mr. Faison.
Actually, I think it's in Mike's as well, um, because. He, Mike, if we're doing this electronically, do we have to come back to a, a publicly available Zoom meeting to? Uh, once we come back into public session after executive?
Yeah, ideally you would, I, I'm wondering if Mr. Faison can just put you back on the live. Uh, YouTube channel for Clark County School District at the end of that uh, executive session, so you can adjourn in, in public view.
That would be great.
Yeah. What you just called, do you want to call me, Dr. Gant, when you're ready and I can call Ms. Palmer and Mr. Faison and they can go back live?
Yes, that was my, that was my recommendation, well, not to call you, but I think that'll be the, probably the cleanest way to do it. So I'll, I'll give you a call or a text, Dr. Thomas.
Okay, I'll be expecting it.
I'll add um, Harold to, and myself to that meeting so that we can log into it when you call.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This has gone very smoothly, you guys are terrific.
At this time, should I go ahead and end the uh, YouTube live?
Yes, that's right, you can go ahead and end the YouTube live.
And be on standby, Mr. Faison, be on standby to come back into live for like thirty seconds whenever they finish that next meeting, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Well, thank you all.
Great meeting, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you all.